Let's bring this June 1st regular Newton Falls Council meeting to order. If you have a cellphone, if you could either turn it off or turn it to vibrate and if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then a time of prayer. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Come on. Precious Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to join together as Newton Falls citizens and we just pray that you are with us. We invite you here into this facility as well as in our hearts and we pray that you are with our country, dear Lord, and we just pray for healing to begin and we pray that it would start here at home and that you would just give us wisdom and direct the meeting tonight. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen. Roll call? Sevett?
Here.
Alberini?
Here.
Waddell?
Braymeyer?
There is.
Go ahead, go ahead. I'm off, I'm sorry. Come back. Hey, is everybody there? Okay, we have any special presentation? No? Okay. Public comments. Anybody that wants to comment? The items are limited to agenda items first, so state your name, your address, keep it two, three minutes and stay with agenda items first.
And that camera is not level, make it level. Do a leg, drop a leg, pick a leg, you could do it, it's a lot. Hi, Tim Stinson, 253 Arlington. This is a good venue, good weather, so congratulations on pulling this event off. I had a couple of things that I wanted to touch on. Number one was the, I see that the sale of that property again is on the agenda. Again, it's $100 for 1.6521 acres. An acre and a half, we're going to sell for $100. It's ridiculous. Put it up for auction. I understand that there is some frontage there that needs to be done, that's fine. Let's re-survey it. On the AMI thing, I don't understand, in the contract, why are we contracting that same company for meters to replace all of the fixtures in City Hall as well as furnaces? I didn't, I wasn't aware that they were a furnace company, so I believe there's at least six furnaces in that contract also. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? If not, we're going to move into reports and I'll start off then with the mayor's report. Obviously, there's not too much outside of here that we're able to do, so there's not too much to report. I just want to thank the individuals that came out tonight. We had an opportunity here to try to bring as much normalcy as possible, all the things that we're going through as a community and you look around for a lot of individuals, the football field or different sports, a lot of times gets you through a lot that you're going through and gives us the opportunity to get out of the council room and not be limited, jammed in there the way that we are and a lot of things that we have that we can do here that we can't do there. And I've had people this week ask me, say, "What are you going to do if it rains?" And the only thing I could say is, there is no plan B. Prayer, you know, so I prayed a lot and it's, the Bible says about the prayers of a righteous being are powerful, so I guess I'll take that as a good thing. But the fact of the matter is, when it does rain outside, you want it to stop, you know, but you can't control the rain, that's truth, but you can open an umbrella. An umbrella, it doesn't change your circumstances, it doesn't change what you're going through, but it changes us in the midst of the circumstances. And that's something I want you to realize, all the things that we are going through, the wetness no longer controls you. And that's a challenge that I have, that through the circumstances that we're going through right now, between the virus and the rioting and the different things that are going on in our country, do not allow these outside forces to control us, not as individuals and not as a community. Don't allow them to change your perspective, don't allow them to control you and don't allow them to control how you treat one another. I'd ask that we would join together as a community. And that's something you've heard me speak and speak and speak, you know, since I've been in office and even before that. Tonight, as a group here, we're going to discuss businesses of the community, we're going to evaluate different things and hopefully get the community to involve yourself as much as possible, but most importantly, realize that God's grace is the umbrella that we have that not only keeps us dry, but leads us to victory. And that's what I would also ask you to offer each other the same grace, not to be divided up by the differences we have, that sometimes we have different opinions, you know, you see it all over Facebook. But stop being defined by these differences and be defined by the one thing that we have in common, the one thing that we love, and that's Newton Falls. You know, you look up here as a group and if we start to become divided up, we start to treat each other unfairly or whatever during situations where we differ, we put that to a stop here as a group, and I would ask you to do the same thing, you know, people that are on TV land, people that are on Facebook, his neighbors, but don't be divided up by the things going on here or the circumstances that we're going through, but instead, give each other grace and allow these circumstances to bring us together. Right? Anybody else? Mr. Sevett, you have anything? Mr. Sevett?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bariac? No reports. Mr. Waddell?
I continue to monitor and watch the webinars for the different organizations that we're involved in. The regional chamber is still working on things in the area, they're still conducting meetings on property, so we're still doing all of that. And if I could with the community garden, there seems to be some question, this community garden is also a free community garden, nobody has to pay to be part of that. Originally, there was 3,000 feet, 3,000 square feet set up for the garden, but it filled up so quick that we ended up adding another 1,000 square feet to the garden, plus the two adjacent neighbors put in another almost 400 square feet for them. So it's out there, it's full, it's really good. I was supposed to have a list tonight of those who have donated money and material to the effort. I don't have that. There were, I think, five gentlemen from the rehab center there by the IGA that came up on Saturday and they worked their rear ends off. They did a nice job, they planted a lot of stuff, got everything ready to go, got a lot of hills made. So it's going along very well and we'll see how the weather holds up for it.
Alberini?
Just wanted to report on a couple of things. I apologize, I'm getting some feedback in my mic, so bear with me. We're going to be establishing a block watch program. A couple of individuals in Ward 1 are interested in getting something going and I've got to clear some chief fixer as well as David Lynch. Once this is going, I would encourage the other ward councilmen to seek some individuals in their area to follow suit and do the same thing, especially in trying times right now. I think this is needed now more than ever. I'm going to stop right there because it's echoing back at me.
Manager Lynch, do you have anything to report?
Just briefly, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairman. The last meeting, I indicated that I would report back to council on the COVID-19 expenses. I think Mr. Stinson raised that issue as well. And the exact amount is $54,956. The vast majority of all of that is various medical supplies, masks, gloves, some test kits, hand sanitizer, and we're, and it works out, by the way, of the entire $460,000, I think that was your question a couple of weeks ago, we are at 11.8% of the total of the $460,000. And I'm very optimistic, we will not approach that total by virtue of the fact that we've kind of stocked up on supplies, as you can tell from the number that I read to you, so I'm optimistic about that. I'm also optimistic, Mr. Chairman, about Senate Bill 310 finally getting passed. It hasn't passed yet, but that's the bill I talked about with reference to reimbursement of some of these expenses from the state, passed through from the federal government, if you can follow that convoluted trail. And the information I receive is that it's still bogged down in committee, but they think it eventually will get here. And part of the problem that's holding it up is the fact that the reimbursement level to Trumbull County, since that's the source of our funding, is at a point of debate in Columbus because a number of our representatives are saying that Trumbull County has had a number of cases, so we should get our fair share, but why should a percentage also go to those counties that have almost no COVID cases? In other words, why should they follow the same formula? And the formula that they initially had planned, Mr. Chairman, was based on our local government fund, which is a fund that's based, for the most part, on population and other things. And it just did not make sense for a county that has more COVID-19 needs not to get a bigger chunk of the funds coming from the federal government. And, you know, I had a meeting, excuse me, a conference with the state representative Gil Blair yesterday, as a matter of fact. He very graciously was conferring on a Sunday and he thinks that will be done within the next week to 10 days. And we're guardedly optimistic in that regard. We are, quite frankly, I'm a little disturbed that it's taking this long. The original stimulus package from which this money is drawn was passed by the United States Congress, I think almost two months ago now. And it's part of the first wave and it's a little bit troubling to me. I have to come back to city council and report back how we're dealing with the money that we were able to take from our reserve fund, but it'd be nice to put all of it back. And, well, enough soapbox about what's going on in the politics down in Columbus and that completes my report. Oh, one other thing, I'm sorry. I did want everybody to know that this meeting almost didn't happen the way you're seeing it happen. About an hour and a half before airtime of this meeting, electric power went out in the city of Newton Falls and yesterday we had problems as well. And I promised Bill George I'd talk about this tonight in my city manager report because we are buyers of electricity, we are not generators of electricity. When it gets to the city of Newton Falls, Bill George and his men make sure all the electricity gets to all of you and all of our buildings. However, that electricity has to come through transmission lines to get here through First Energy and First Energy has been having problems left and right. And it's a great frustration of Bill because he can fix just about anything, but when it's somebody else's artery, people are still complaining that what's going on in Newton Falls. So Bill and his entire crew have been Johnny on the spot with this thing and as a result of that, this broadcast almost didn't happen. The microphone settings, I was explaining to councilman Bariac when he got here, that we have created some separate microphone settings for everybody's voice around here because the acoustics here are just obviously horrible, sound goes straight up. So it took a lot of doing to get all the settings where it needed to be, a lot of testing and Tom Gregory and his crew have been working here since early this afternoon and they had it absolutely perfect when the power went out and destroyed every single digital setting he had. And, you know, 10 minutes before this meeting started, we were still trying to find a way, so we appreciate all your patience and want you to all understand that Bill George and his men, they have the finest record in the state of Ohio in terms of periods of time that electricity is out based on repairs made by the local Newton Falls Electric Department and very, very proud of it. And every time it's somebody else's fault, he wants to make sure I point that out. And Bill, you've done a great job and thanks for your patience, Mr. Chairman. That completes my report.
Hey, anybody have any questions for the city manager?
On this coronavirus expense account that we have, and this will be directed towards Mrs. Munson too. Mrs. Munson, is this report accurate and all-inclusive, and I don't mean stuff that hasn't been paid yet or the money transferred? Is there other funds out there, other stuff been spent?
This report is accurate as of the end of May, May 31st, today's June 1st, so it is, we haven't spent anything yet for June, so it's very accurate.
In other words, there's no bills that'll be, money will be transferred that haven't been paid yet?
That is correct.
Anybody else? City manager? If not, then we'll, finance director, Mrs. Munson, do you have anything for us?
I just have two points to make, Your Honor, for tonight. For the 2020 financial goals for the city of Newton Falls, we've been trying to do a debt management analysis and we have, we'll be having at our next council meeting, some very important legislation to deal with our debt management strategy. So some pending legislation will be coming for our next meeting. Nature Works grant will be installed around June 11th. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for the finance director? Go ahead, you got the floor.
Me with our coronavirus supplies we needed, our gloves, our masks, who were those purchased from?
Okay, the supplies for COVID-19, masks and gloves, were actually a whole variety of different vendors. So we have RS Imprints, for example. We had Concentrate Health Alliance as an example. We have a whole different, different variety of vendors. Ace Hardware provided some masks. We did have US Safety Gear provided some masks. So we have a variety of different vendors that provided those medical supplies.
All right, thank you.
Okay, if not, then Mr. Fritz, do you have anything?
No, sir, ladies and gentlemen, I have nothing to report, but I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Do we have any, any changes to tonight's agenda? Okay, do we want to? Yeah, and that's the question I was going to ask, if we need to make a motion or do we need to move the executive session, the time that we have it or?
Executive session right now, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't, is that, is right now when we wanted to do it or do we want to?
Is that right?
I thought we were going to go up. Okay, before the public hearings, go ahead and do it now or?
I don't know.
Um, for?
Personnel.
Yeah.
Mayor, could we do the first two, the comp time and that, and then make a motion? Or is that, do you want to do the first two and then make a motion to go into executive session? That's up to you. I don't know, you know.
Mr. Mayor, you can go through the other items to clarify.
Yeah, we could, we could do whatever you guys want to do. We could, we could do all of them other than ordinance 202015, if you want to do that. And we'll hold that, go into executive session and come out, is that what we want to do?
I'm looking at the public hearing section and this is in fact the time for, so the time for the public hearings.
Yeah.
And Mr. Law Director, would it not make sense to go through the public hearing process and then go into executive session?
That would seem to make sense to me.
Okay.
All right. Do we have to make any type of motion on that or no? After the public hearings? All right. Let's go ahead and approve the previous minutes then. Mr. Waddell makes a motion, do we have a second to approve May 18th regular meeting minutes? Second, Mrs. Braymeyer, roll call.
Alberini?
Yes?
Waddell, Braymeyer, Bariac, Sevett?
Yes?
I can't hear Zach.
I can't hear either.
Again, say your name, your address, you have three minutes, but you're open to any topic. Okay, never mind, never mind, yeah, I was thinking it was public comments. All right, never mind.
He's out of order. Sorry.
Public hearings on Resolution 17-2020 alternate tax budget. Okay, closed. Next is ordinance 2020-14 comp time. Okay, closed. Next is ordinance 2020-15 law director contract.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I don't know if you guys can hear me or not, hopefully you can, hopefully the other council members can hear as well, Terry and Zach both, I know one of my councilmen, my ward councilman is on the phone, so hopefully he can hear all this. I'm, I want to speak today, my name is Brian Crop, 247 Elizabeth Street in the first ward, as I mentioned. I want to comment on the renewal of the contract. There are several issues. I don't necessarily have an issue with having a full-time law director, whether it be Mr. Fritz or anyone else for that matter. I think the law director position is a very important position, it's necessary for everything that we do here in the city and it is a very detail-oriented position. But with that being said, the contract that's been written up and put together here, I think has a lot of flaws and things that need to be addressed specifically before, especially before it gets voted on tonight, and I think it should be something that should be moved forward to another meeting, maybe table this or vote this down and do it a different way. First, I'll just start right off with the city prosecutor, the very first section. As far as the city prosecutor being able, or the city law director being able to have an assistant prosecutor and hire that person to essentially do that person's job is basically written out here in the language. And this is a full-time position, but this person's only going to be working for 16 hours a week. If every other full-time position in the city of Newton Falls decided they wanted to get full-time pay plus full-time benefits for only working 16 hours a week, what would you guys do as council? What would you tell them? How would you address that? You can't have one person getting paid for full-time, getting full benefits and only working 16 hours and be able to hire someone else to essentially do that role if necessary. I don't have a problem with that. Again, I think it's, there's, there could be a potential, a lot of things that need to be addressed with the city, so if you need an assistant, so be it. But it should be a full-time position, they should be employed 40 hours a week. Also on top of that, the attorney and potentially the assistant prosecutor would be paid additional monies, $125 an hour for any jury trial and also for city legislature, for, let me find it here, hold on one second. Also for any kind of city and civil litigation, sorry, research, preparation, filing, that kind of stuff, will be paid at $125 an hour on top of a $55,000 a year salary. I think that's, to me, I think that's a bit excessive for someone who will be able to operate potentially their own private practice, only working 16 hours a week and having an assistant prosecutor. There's no, there's nothing that's going to preclude whoever this law director may be, whoever we hire, to operate their own private practice if they choose to. And then you also have a severance issue. You have 18 months worth of severance for a four-year contract. I would suggest the city has a two-year contract with an option to renew for an additional two years and a six-month severance package as opposed to an 18-month severance package. I just think that's exorbitant. There's no need for that. If this person's working 16 hours a week, whoever this person is, if they're working 16 hours a week, they can operate their own private practice. It doesn't take six months, 12 months, 18 months to ramp up any business if you're a business operator. That's just not how that works. I think the city needs to be smart about this and how they move forward and I hope that they'll consider that moving forward as far as this contract is concerned to address this language and address the issues in this contract. Thank you very much.
Do you want to, be heard on the law director's contract? Okay, then that's closed. The next item is ordinance 2020-16 authorizing the sale of property to Christopher King. Okay, if nobody closed. And the last item is ordinance 2020-10 authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with gardener for an AMI project.
Hello? Hi, Tim Stinson, 253 Arlington. Again, this is a huge amount of money here to be spending on these meters. Again, I brought up the fact that there's some other additional contracts written in there towards the end, doing lighting and furnaces and whatnot in that contract. And then the third piece, or whatever number I'm on, is there an opt-out fee or an opt-out option to do these instead of having a smart meter? And then I guess my last point is, who's controlling the privacy of these? It's monitoring everything that goes in on, goes on in your household as far as what your usage is going to be. So there's some privacy concerns there. Where is that data going to be stored? Is that the city's responsibility or is it the company's responsibility? You know, where is that going to be stored, I guess is my question.
All right, Brian Crop again, 247 Elizabeth Street. I have some serious reservations here with the contract that's, that we're talking about here as far as the gardener service. Even on the ordinance itself, on the language of the ordinance, you have automated meter implementation solutions, AMI. That's not even what AMI stands for. AMI stands for advanced metering infrastructure, there's no mention of that in the contract whatsoever. You have, in the contract as well, it also says successful bidder. I haven't heard anything else about anybody else that's bid, who those bidders were, what the bids were. There's been no discussion or no, that I've heard as far as divulging who those people are. And I've got several other things I'm going to address. Of course, Mr. Stinson talked about the cost. We're talking about a contract for over $3 million in the city of Newton Falls. I spoke with my councilman earlier today, Zach Sevett, and asked him if he could share some information with me based on this contract and we kind of went over it a little bit. In this contract, there are, it states the scope of the contract. You've got 2,700, over 2,700 MTUs, which are meter transmission units. Nowhere in the contract whatsoever does it state itemized how much those units cost, what they're going to cost to replace, if there's any other issues. You've got three data collection units, which will be the things that will store the data that Mr. Stinson was talking about. And you've got tough pads, which I think are iPads or something along those lines that are going to be used for out in the field. We have no idea how much any of this stuff's going to cost. There's no itemized breakdown in the contract. I went over it and I didn't see it anywhere in there. There's also programming and software stuff that's going to be involved. There's actually a Gantt chart that was involved, that's part of the contract as well. Because it was scheduled to start in April, we're not going to get started until potentially July if this were to pass, which means it's going to go far into, potentially into 2021 over the winter time. I don't know if that makes any issues for this company, whether or not they're able to do that or not. I have more things here, give me one second. Okay, in, in the contract here, which is a generic contract, there's been no alterations or no changes to this contract. Gardener completed this contract. I haven't seen any, any kind of changes at all. The client services responsibilities, the city will be responsible for providing anything extra above locking rings, meter base covers, boots, meter bands, screws. uh, screws, covers, seals, wires, gaskets, washers. The city will be, uh, responsible for paying for all of this on top of the $3 million, uh, charge. Also, very important, 3 dash 2 dash 6 repairs. Clients will be responsible for performing repairs discovered during the installation process, et cetera. Also, on the, right where the, the cost of what it's going to cost per year, any repairs of equipment are provided outside the scope of this agreement, meaning anything, if 10 years from now all of these meters fail, the city will be on the hook for replacing every single one of them. I actually have an article here from Canton. Canton actually did this, uh, several years ago, and after 11 years, their, their devices, the new meters that they had installed, all started failing. We don't have any kind of warranty in this contract that I could find, anything that states that we're off the hook or that there's any protection to protect of, of meter failures or anything. We're doing this to try and save money allegedly, but where's the money savings if all these meters fail in 10 years, 12 years, 15 years, and we're on the hook to pay for all of them? Who's going to pay for that? In this article, the city had to pay an additional $5 million to get these meters fixed. Uh, and they're supposed to have a 20-year lifespan. They only went 11 years. So I hope the city's looking into this. I think this is a terrible contract to get into right now, and I really hope you guys take this into consideration. If it's not going to save us any money, there's no point in doing it right now, especially, that, I didn't even bring up the coronavirus situation. The city shouldn't be spending $3 million right now. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Okay, if nobody else, we're going to close this and, um, need to make a motion for executive session. Is that what we need to do? Somebody wants to make a, a motion that we go into executive session? For, um, personnel matters to consider one or more applicable, um, for employment and compensations? For the law director's contract, do we have a motion? Mr. Bariak? Do we have a second?
Discussion?
Discussion.
I have a question.
Okay.
Where's it going to be?
Who asked that?
I did.
Oh, right here.
Yeah, where, where at?
Right here.
Right here. And then how do we hear the, uh, two councilmen that are on the phone?
Okay.
Waddell?
No.
Braymeyer?
No.
Berriac?
Yes.
Savet? Alberini?
Okay, three to two.
Kathy, how do I know where I'm supposed to?
One of them chairs. Any one you want.
We have a, uh, motion? Executive session and enter into the regular meeting. Uh, Mr. Waddell makes the motion. Do we have a second? Okay, roll call.
Braymeyer? Berriac? Savet?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Okay, um, exited executive session, back to regular meeting, and now we're on unfinished business.
A motion, a motion to require that AMI meter installation only occur after and approved by state county departments to help protect citizens from coronavirus concerns.
Hey, do we have a motion? Mr. Uh, Waddell, do we have a second? Mr. Savet, okay, discussion. Yeah, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This suggestion actually was initiated by Councilman Savet. It's, it's really his motion, um, that addresses a safety concern. And the Councilman Savet, I'd like to defer to you if, uh, you want to explain this in some detail.
Yeah, absolutely. So, one of my concerns with the AMI meter installation was on that we, um, the installation would happen during the COVID-19 epidemic. So I wanted to make sure we delayed it till after the epidemic was over or that, or when the health department or the state or the federal government allowed us to do the installations.
Mr. Chairman, um, I wholeheartedly endorse, uh, Councilman Savet's suggestion. I think it's just a simple safety measure. Uh, so I would urge council's adoption of the motion.
Only to, uh, delay it until after the Corona. It's not a pass or fail on this.
No, that's right. It's, it, it has to be approved by the state and the county health departments.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, if not, um, roll call.
Berriac?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell? Braymeyer?
Okay, motion passes.
No, no, that's, that's, no, no, it's a passed motion.
Yeah, comp time, 202014, okay. I don't have one on me, no.
Ordinance amending ordinance 2018 dash six establishing terms and conditions of employment and rules and regulations regarding personnel policies, practices and procedures for employees of the city of Newton Falls.
Okay, do we have a motion? Okay, Mr. Waddell, do we have a second?
Second.
And Ms. Braymeyer, okay, any discussion? Mr. Bariak?
It's not the comp time. It's the real issue here. The, what, what everybody else is doing is biting a bullet in this county, laying people off, cutting back 10%. They don't know what the revenue stream is going to be yet. And all we're doing is, all we're doing is dodging a, you know, is kicking a can down the road. Pretty soon you'll have to pay the piper. They'll have to either be paid off or they'll take vacation, more vacation. And then maybe if they can't get somebody to, to, uh, fill in, we'll be paying another person. I, I'm not against the comp time, but I'm against all the reasoning for it because of the money. One minute we don't have a dime, we don't have a dime for roads, we don't have money for this, and next minute we're just, uh, go ahead and do what we want to do. We have to start reining in and giving the people something that they can see. Working on our, working on our infrastructure, working on our parks. We, if we have to tighten the budget right now, uh, without laying somebody off, so be it. But I think it's just kicking a can down the road.
Okay, if not, um, roll call. Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell? Berriac?
Passes. Do we have a motion? Was that Waddell? Terry, Alberini. Okay, do we have a second? Okay, discussion. Any discussion on this? Yeah, you have the floor.
Thank you. There's been a lot of discussion about this. I want to clarify a couple of things. Mr. Crop raised a good point about the 16 hours. Uh, this is not a 16-hour contract. That's just on the prosecution side, and that's a requirement to the Ohio Revised Code. There'd be a minimum 16-hour provision. Uh, in addition to that, there's another section as relates to law, relates to law directing. And, um, what I'm going to ask this council to do, uh, to address the issue of the, um, $125, uh, hour section is that, um, what council do is, uh, pass this contract with an amendment to strike the $125 provision contained in Section 3, uh, and in addition, uh, that Section 3 be amended, uh, to describe the position as full-time equivalent. So, um, uh, I'm, I'm going to ask if the members of this body would, uh, pass, uh, some would make a motion. I can't do it since I'm not a member of the body. Somebody make an amendment, uh, a, a motion to amend to eliminate the $125 section, uh, amount in Section 3 and to insert language "full-time equivalent." Uh, and then I'll have further comments, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to see if we can get that amendment done before we start moving forward.
I'll make that motion.
You're, that's a second. Uh, Waddell makes the motion, Alberini seconds it, um, discussion.
Well, on the amendment itself, I'm going to get into the body of it, Your Honor, but, uh, I'm, uh, the only thing on the floor right now is the amendment.
Okay, so roll call then, correct?
Yes.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. No.
Savet?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be recognized on the, uh, the legislation as amended.
Okay, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, uh, members of council, uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, thanks so much for, uh, your participation tonight. And this has been a, a controversial matter, but it ought not to be. Um, Mr. Fritz, since the time that I arrived, uh, he has been, um, responding to various inquiries to the point where he is now de facto a full-time law director. And, uh, all that he's asked to happen in the meantime is can we toss in his health insurance and a nominal $2,000 increase? That's all that's left here. Full-time law director, $2,000 increase and health insurance. Um, and the only thing I would say to you in that regard is that, uh, comparatively speaking, uh, the value that we've been getting, um, just since the coronavirus started, our interface with the health department to make sure that we're in compliance and we don't get sued has been the law director. When we get a public records request, we're required to have it reviewed by the law director. On average, we are now averaging a public records request approximately once every six days. And, um, the, the volume of work that's involved, uh, unfortunately, doesn't allow the law director just to say, well, I'm too busy right now. Um, I spent the weekend reviewing with the law director, uh, various issues that came up regarding the coronavirus. Uh, and the city, uh, unfortunately, uh, there's a phrase that Mr. Copeland quoted me on quite accurately, and that is in the modern municipality, all roads lead to the law director. Uh, we live in now the most litigious time in history. Every docket and every court in terms of civil, civil litigation is exploding. Uh, the dockets continue to grow and grow and grow. Uh, and Mr. Fritz has hung in there with us. And, um, I'm asking council to pass the legislation as amended because now we are recognizing the full-time work Mr. Fritz has been doing over the last several years anyhow. And, um, as long as we have the amendment that's been passed, uh, I think that $125 question has been addressed. Uh, we now have allowed a nominal increase, $2,000 in healthcare. That's all that's changed. And, um, the other thing I wanted to say briefly is, you know, the law director's the umpire. Mr. Mayor, he can't rule in your favor every time, um, that you want him to. And I, you know, I, I can't disclose because of attorney-client privilege, every single time the law director's marched into my office and said, "You can't do that." Um, but it happens, and it's his job to make it happen. And I'm awfully glad he's there. Uh, because, uh, when the city manager, I have designs on a plan that I think are a solution to a problem, but the solution I've designed could get the city in trouble, we need to have somebody standing behind home plate calling balls and strikes. And he does it here. And it is a position where being a winner of popularity contest just gets the city in legal trouble. And a number of rulings he's made have made him unpopular, but he's followed the law. And there's not a single person at this table, including yours truly, that hasn't had a proposition shot down out of the air because the law director has seen that it's problematic. Um, an example of that is when the law director made it clear to the Board of Elections that one of our council people had to stand for reelection this year. One of our council people didn't like that. Uh, but the fact is that Joe has to, he has to call him like he sees him. Uh, and it's a, it's a, it's a difficult and challenging position. Um, if you watch a major league ballgame, when a ball goes bouncing off the plate, the catcher usually sees what's happening and he dodges here and there, but the person that gets hit the most is the umpire. And, uh, it's, it's somewhat of a thankless job, but based on the race that are presented here today, um, we are in a position, uh, to get what one of the councilmen has described in the past as a bargain. as a bargain. And these are troubled and difficult times right now. And don't change horses midstream. I'd ask you to pass the contract in its amended form. And those are my remarks, Mr. Chairman.
Fritz, you have the floor.
Been a few misconceptions about the contract I want to clear up because if this contract passes, there's been clearly improper information placed out there. The position of law director for Newton Falls under Ohio law is responsible for the Newton Falls Municipal Court. The 16 hours you see in the contract is a requirement to show that that law director is having someone prosecuting in that court. The assisted prosecutor section is, for example, I go on vacation one week a year. When that happens, I have to have someone sitting in that chair prosecuting. It's my responsibility to see that they get paid. The city does not pay that person. I'm a contract employee for those purposes. So if I'm not there, I have to see that that position is filled. That's what the 16 hours is about. The purpose of the fact that we have the word "full-time equivalency" is because the health insurance issue came up. But I keep hearing about the severance being improper, and I want to explain that just for a second. The severance only comes into place if I don't do my job. If I'm terminated for cause, there's no severance pay. The reason I put that in there is there's been issues before, but specifically, I don't want to have to make decisions trying to keep three people on council happy. Where three people decide they're going to change the direction of the wind, and I'm going to remove the law director for no apparent reason. My protection is that if they terminate me for no reason, I have the ability to get severance pay and go on with my career, even though it's going to take a hit when that happens. If I do not show up for my job, if I do my job poorly over a period of time, that's, there's no severance. So that contract is clearly, I only receive severance if I'm not doing my job. I receive that severance if for no reason other than three council members decide today is the day they don't want me, they want someone else or nobody there because they didn't like one of my decisions. That's why that severance package is in there. That severance package doesn't protect me. That protects the citizenry of Newton Falls, that my decision is not made on a political basis. My decision is made on the basis of the law. And I want to make sure those things are clear. There was confusion about the 125, and now it's been amended and removed. So I just want to make sure people knew that the severance was there for a reason. The 16 hours is not what I'm working. I'm working in excess of that. I've been here for Monday morning staff meetings in office on Mondays for probably the 14 months that Mr. Lynch has been here. I am here on other days. I'm received by phone call at my private office and my home when I work out of the home on a regular basis. I work far more than 16 hours for this city on a weekly basis. I probably work more than 40 hours a week for the city on a weekly basis. That is why I've asked for the increase after the two contracts with no increase, and we negotiated out from my original contract request to this council. I sent a copy of my request to council with a cover sheet indicating why I asked for it about a month ago. This contract didn't just pop up yesterday. Mr. Lynch then approached me, and we worked on negotiating between the two of us to get most of the structure we had here, and now we have the contract as has been in front of everyone. I thank everybody for listening, and I appreciate the fact that, at least at this stage, I'm able to continue to work for the city of Newton Falls. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Bariak, you have the floor.
Mr. Fritz, I want you to know, any decision I make is not personal. We're not going to make this personal. It's business, sir. Now, I'm looking at the money aspect right now. $55,000 from the city of Newton Falls, 17 from Lordstown. I don't know, nobody will give me the, but there's a stipend from all the other municipalities, Farmington, Bravesville, it's in the courts. I don't know what that is. And then hospitalization is probably $10,000, $12,000, whatever, I don't know. But we have $80,000 some thousand dollars right there. And also, what I'd say, we got a four-year contract, which we don't know whether two, maybe three of the councilmen won't be here. We don't know who's going to be here. And Mr. Fritz, there was a point brought up, and I want to be very honest with you. When I went to hire Mr. Lynch, you sat there, sir, and there were charges brought against me was the reason I brought Mr. Lynch in to first defend me, and those charges never got brought to me. Now, I didn't see you jump up, I'm not going to take it personal, but I don't remember what those false charges were. I never knew what charges there were. It was all dropped. Everything was done to keep me from hiring Mr. Lynch. Everything. All I'm saying is, I understand your argument. You'd like to get another four years in, but two, three years contract or nine months, I voted the last time for your contract, sir, to go, I think it was from six months to nine months. I don't feel that that's being, you need 18 months to, should the next council, whoever it is, decide that they might want to look for somebody else. And that's their prerogative. They are elected officials, elected officials. So I can understand. Me too. Now, we're going, 1%, the employees get a raise, you get a raise. I asked about vacation time. He said there's no vacation time, but it's not in there. I mean, it doesn't say I will not get vacation time. I don't know. You know what I mean? I mean, the contract was put together without my knowledge. Just tonight, when we had the executive session, was the first time.
Okay, any other discussion? Mr. Waddell, you have the floor.
I'm just going to just reiterate just for a second. You know, Mr. Bariak keeps bringing up the fact that three years is enough if he doesn't want a four-year contract. He gave a four-year contract with two other councilmen and the city manager, which was the first four-year contract that we had. When Mr. Alberini made a motion, seconded by Mr. Beard, to reduce that to three years, it went down three to two. Mr. Bariak voting against that. So he has set the bar for four years, and I think this is fine.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, can I say something? I'm sorry, I'm on delay here. Bear with me.
It's your first, okay, Mr. Alberini.
Thank you. I heard Mr. Bariak's points are well taken. And when Mr. Bariak says it's not personal, unfortunately, in this case with Mr. Fritz, it's been personal this whole time. And we are getting an outstanding, I don't want to use the word bargain because it sounds cheap, but we are getting an outstanding bargain for the value that Mr. Fritz has brought to the city of Newton Falls. We haven't been sued, which is unusual for Newton Falls, as previous councils and previous mayors were. So just that alone, I can't put a price tag on how much money that has saved us in lawsuits and things like that. And I know personally that there's several members on council that literally call Mr. Fritz several times a day on issues that really are really not paramount of issue. I call them time-waster issues. But he's here to set the benchmark for us to follow the letter of the law in Newton Falls. Some of the folks on Facebook think that we don't, but Mr. Fritz is our guiding light here, so to speak, in making sure that we don't make incorrect decisions. I'm with Mr. Waddell. I think that, you know, we've been through this a couple of years ago, and I think it's time to move on. Joe has proven his value to us as a community leader and as our personal attorney, and I'm all for bringing him back on board and keeping our executive team intact and keeping our, keep the stability of the city of Newton Falls going.
Okay, any other discussion? Mr. Bariak, you got your second.
I would just like to say that if Mr. Fritz would be doing his job, I don't see you'd have any problem at all with, I don't understand the severance, I don't understand the, still don't understand the full-time employee. They voted a motion to, let me read it. Is this the motion we just voted on that I voted no on? For prosecution by jury trial scheduled in the court on the excessive two days per week, attorney or assistant prosecuting shall be paid an additional sum for the appearance for jury trials provided by Section 3. Is that what we did away with? Is that what we did away with?
No. We, the, we added to $55,000, and we did away with the $125 addition.
Well, Section 3, is that the section we did away with the $125, the Section 3?
Is that the section? I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but I know it's the $125 that we did away with.
Was that for the prosecution, Mr. Fritz?
No, sir.
What's it for? The law director?
Civil work for the city, sir.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Ms. Braymire? No. Okay, if there's no other discussion, roll call.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yes.
Bariak?
No.
Sevett?
Yeah.
Alberini?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes.
Ordinance 2020-16, an ordinance selling portion of parcel 53-003024 to Christopher King.
Okay, do we have a motion?
No motion.
Okay, Mr. Waddell, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I can't hear the, I can't hear what the motion.
This is the Chris King property.
Sale of property to Chris King. We have a second. Second, Alberini, discussion. Mr. Waddell, you have the floor.
I'd like to address Mr. Stinson's question up there. First of all, when the original proposal came out, I voted against that because it was, I thought astronomical, and I kind of agree with him. You know, we have city property, and, you know, we need to utilize it. But the, once I got to looking at it and we reduced it, what I will say is this, the property that is, most of the property that is the question right now is property that's been maintained by the previous property owner and the current property ever since 1964. A lot of this property is wooded and isn't used by the baseball leagues or anybody else at the time. I'm not sure what the percentage of the wooded property is, but a good part of it is wooded, and they don't use it. The other situation is, and there is a state law that says if you maintain and improve property over a period of time, you can acquire that property free of charge. And the city's owned that for a long time. I don't know exactly how long Mr. King has lived there and if he fits within that timeframe. But once he fits into that timeframe, because he maintains the property now as it was maintained when the previous owner was there. So as much as I agree that we're selling off, you know, a little over an acre there for $100 doesn't sound quite right, but again, there's also a stipulation where Mr. King could, if time is on his side, acquire it for absolutely nothing, because he can show he maintained it and improved it. And I, like I said, we reduced it. It's a shame that the house was built that close to the property line, within inches of the property line. I'm not sure how that happened. It was in the township at the time, and we had nothing to do with it. But he compromised, and right now, it's basically the property that has been maintained over the last three decades, and it's, part of it's wooded. I'd say probably close to 50% of it is wooded anyway.
Okay, do we have any other discussion? Okay, if not, roll call.
Braymire?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Sevett?
Yeah.
Alberini?
Yeah.
Waddell?
Yes.
Okay, passes. Okay, ordinance 2020-10, we need to make a motion to take it off the table.
Take it off the table. It was on the table. Should have to remove it, otherwise.
Okay, Mr. Sevett made the motion. Do we have a second?
He already did.
Huh?
He already said.
Okay, Alberini, discussion.
What's this, to take it off the table?
Yeah.
Bariak?
No.
Sevett?
Yeah.
Alberini?
Yeah.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yes.
Okay, taking off the table then. New business? Oh, you have to vote on that? Okay. Any discussion on? Mr. Lynch, you have the floor.
Thank you. Members of city council, the, Mr. Crop and Mr. Stinson have raised a couple of issues related to this legislation as well. I don't want you to think these are the only people that I pay attention to, but they raised some issues, and I've seen some discussion of this. One of the things I wanted to address directly was as it relates to the dollar amounts. The city of Newton Falls is losing money by not replacing meters that have to be replaced right now. Our meters are so decrepit that the turbines in the meters are not turning during low flow. As a result of that, we are seeing water disappearing from our system because the failure of the turbines to turn in one of these decrepit old meters means the water is going into the residence or into the business without any bill going to the resident or the business because the turbines have to turn in order to make a registration of utilization of that water. We have a significant water loss, and this, by the way, I've been talking about these meters for about a year or so. I finally introduced the legislation, and then we also had a special meeting where the folks from Gardiner were here in order to address some of the concerns that we had. So this is the third official time that this has been discussed. In addition to the unofficial discussions we've had, anybody that's been getting the citywide newsletters, though, that knows that we've been talking about this, and my only point is this, when Mr. Bariak says, "These are tough times financially," I understand the point you're making, Councilman, but probably the difficulty is that if the amount of money that comes in as a result of the savings exceeds the amount that you're spending, and you asked me, you looked me right in the eye during the informational meeting, Councilman Bariak, you said, "Mr. Lynch, will you guarantee that the amount of money that we bring in exceeds the cost that we have?" And by the way, it's not just the $3 million. We should all be very clear, there's an interest rate attached to that as well. And the finance director is going to address that and the advantages as it relates to that. My only point is that we can't afford not to do this. Automatic meters have been going in, I think the city of Cleveland put in automatic meters, started to about 10 years ago. And unfortunately, one of the biggest problems we encounter in our water department and our electric department is human error in the meters. The other aspect of this is that the consumer savings, no one's talking about it. On your smartphone, you'll be able to watch your meter turn on your smartphone. In other words, it's computer-connected. And I understand Mr. Stinson's point, he's, you know, there's some literature out there, and I respectfully refer to it as sort of a conspiracy theory thing. The thing is that if you have automatic meters, Big Brother has now entered your household. Does anybody here have an Alexa at home? Or one of those devices, an iHome device? Does anybody here realize that your car now contains a chip so people know how fast you're going, when how fast you're going? Does anybody here have a smartphone and know that when your smartphone's off, Google still knows where you've gone? By the way, I'm not promoting those intrusions in terms of Big Brother, but Mark Havens, when he was here, talked about the protections that have been built into this program. We have to stop denying our own customers the opportunities for savings that they realize when they have access to information. when they have access to information. The smart meters have the capability of telling the homeowner how much electricity and water they're using almost in real time. I think we, Mark and I talked about the fact that you can set it to update every five minutes. Can I wrap up? Yes. Anyways, that's kind of a bird's eye view, but we are in difficult financial times. That's why I'm urging this council to give us the opportunity to bring our, under control, the expenditures we're making as it relates to our utilities, electric and water. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Braemeyer?
Is very, is very for this, the new meters and so forth, is that right?
May I respond to that, Mr. King?
Yes.
Yes.
Prophone. There we go. Mr. George was at the informational meeting and gave a very impassioned talk about how important this is to his department. And by the way, one of the reasons he's so strongly for it is, Councilman Braemeyer, there's a big challenge when you've got to send a crew to someone's house to disconnect utility. There is a safety issue. The chief will tell you, there've been occasions where the police department has to go out with our utility guys because there's a disgruntled property owner that doesn't want the utility shut off. The safety factor alone in these meters allows a computer keystroke to turn off the electricity or turn off that water under the unusual circumstance where we have to. Doesn't happen a lot, but it's enough to offer protection to people.
Right.
Bill George is the biggest proponent of this in City Hall.
Good, good. That's all. I'm done.
Any other discussion? Mr. Waddell? Mr. Savet?
Um, Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
Can you address the comments made about the LED lighting and the furnaces?
Yes, I can. This contract is for us to have savings through the AMI meters. There is a provision in it that also says that to whatever extent Gardner can identify electric savings through the replacement of LED lighting in buildings that need it, they will do so. However, my view of this thing is that is less than 1/10th of 1% of the total contract. And the reason for that is, all our street lights have been converted and we only have three buildings now in the entire city government that haven't been converted yet. One is 19 North Canal, one is the Streets Department, and I can't at the moment remember the third one, but it is a tiny, virtually microscopic portion of the contract.
Well, what about the furnaces?
Yeah, they will do an evaluation as it relates to the furnaces as well, but again, we don't know where that, what degree of savings it would be, but they are going to take a look at those as well.
Mr. Savet, is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Any other discussion, Mr. Waddell?
To speak about the, the meters themselves, that the investor-owned utilities have been doing that for a long period of time, and this area will be completely converted by 2021 by the investor-owned utilities and back to whole part of Ohio that's controlled by First Energy, PA, New Jersey, Delaware, Maryland, West Virginia, part of it, that'll all be converted by 2021. We keep talking about the safety part of it and it does really, really help. There've been many utility workers across the United States that have been injured when they went to shut these off and people shot at them because they don't want them up there, you know, tearing it down. But the other part that I think's important is, the city manager talked about the lost revenue that the city is losing because of the meters not working properly. It also works the other way, that there are people who are, who might be paying more than they should be because they're registered wrong. I think you just handled a case in the Third Ward on a disputed bill and I don't know what the reasons were, but the bill was high, I do know that. And there are cases out there where the meters read high. So people, you know, it's going to be a toss of a coin there whether you, your bill goes up a little bit or your bill goes down or it doesn't change at all because you might have a good meter. So there are both sides of that. It's not just that, you know, your bills are going to go up because your meters aren't working right, your bill could go down because your meter's not working right also.
Okay, any other discussion? Mr. Bariak, you have the floor.
I don't see the contract about, what about the new municipal building? Are we going to put LED lights in that? Is that going to be another addendum?
No, at the moment, that's not included, Mr. Bariak. Would not be a new addendum.
All right, let me get at a few things here. I asked whether, why we couldn't bid the LEDs out and then bid the meters out separate, where we could do more work on either one. You told me, I'm not going to go through bidding it again, but then the next time I was told it's a state contract. They wrote this contract themselves. I didn't see any performance bond, I didn't see any guarantees of workman's comp, subcontractors will be paid. What happens if, are we being named as insured in case there is a lawsuit from some subby coming in here? I haven't seen a lot of that stuff in the contract, sir. And then you said we were going to write a performance bond, is it in there right now? You said we're going to do it after the fact.
No, the performance bond is in the contract right now, Council.
It is?
Yes, sir.
On the new one?
Yes, sir.
Because I had two copies, I didn't...
Yeah, yeah, it's in your most recent copy, which is...
It wasn't before, was it?
Originally, it was not in there. It is in there now. And by the way, I wanted to address...
Excuse me, I have the floor, sir.
Okay, I thought you wanted me to answer the question. Can I finish my answer?
Mr. Waddell also said...
Or not.
What do you want to answer?
The question that you asked.
Go ahead.
Okay. The question related to the performance bond is the aspect that has been tossed around with reference to, how do we make sure that this is complied with? Someone earlier today asked about whether or not, how do we make sure that they follow through? That's what the performance bond does.
Okay. Mr. Waddell said on council floor, he said, "Something, electric bills are going to go up, some are going to go down." To me, that seems like there could be a wash on the savings. There, can you show me in that contract or that proposal where they're going to guarantee any amount of savings? Can you show me? Can you show me? Who did the, who did the study? They did? Their own, their own company did the study, right?
Well, that's right, but as you know, the state co-op was involved in the selection of the responsible contractor for that purpose.
Mr. Lynch, I never saw the bids from anybody else that even had a chance of this.
But you've had this contract for a long time and it says state co-op.
I got four names of companies, I don't even know if they bid. I don't, I don't know. I didn't know, I don't know that.
I can't help you with that.
Okay, any other discussion? No? Okay. Roll call. Savet?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braemeyer?
Yes.
Bariak?
No.
Passes. Okay, new business?
Resolution 17-2020, resolution accepting the amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
So moved.
Waddell? Second is Savet. Discussion?
All right. Thank you, members of council. This is your 2021 budget. The tax budget is submitted to the Trumbull County Audit Budget Commission by July 15th of each year. You receive the attachment that will show you the general fund and special police levy pension fund on page one, which receives property taxes. That's the purpose of the tax budget, is to distinguish how much revenue we're going to get. This is what we do every year, this is a common exercise. On Schedule II is all the funds on what we would estimate in the year 2021 for beginning balance, how much revenue we'll receive, how much we have available to spend, and what we anticipate in spending. Now, in the fall, we will go through the 2021 budget in detail, but this is to get this process started with the Trumbull County Tax Commission. On the Schedule III, it lists our voted and unvoted debt, and we basically only have inside debt and it's only related to the USDA loans and our electric system note. That is all the debt that we have to be certified for the tax commission. That's all I have.
Discussion, comments? Okay, if done, then, roll call.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braemeyer?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Passes. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, Alberini, or Savet made the motion, Alberini seconded it. Roll call.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braemeyer?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yep.
Okay, pass. Public comments. State your name, your address, comments can be for anything, even non-agenda items, and you have a three-minute time limit. Okay, if there is nobody, then we're going to close the comments. All right? Closing remarks, start with the First Ward, Mr. Savet, do you have any closing remarks?
No, no closing remarks.
Mr. Bariak, any closing remarks?
Well, I can't say too much tonight, except that in these trying times, I sure hope that we didn't stretch ourselves out too much tonight. I have yet to see anything that will guarantee us to save us any money. And water meters, you know, everybody says water meters are going to save us a lot of money, well, we got old pipes, we got breaks all the time. If we could get, from what I was able to ascertain from the water department, if we're lucky, if we ever get below 9%, at least that's what it's been since 2009. And I just don't believe with the times we are right now, you know, that we should be going into more, put the community $4.2 million in debt on something that we don't really know is going to pan out. I mean, everybody, when I talked to some of the county officials, they said, "Well, those aren't a bad thing maybe, but if they're set up right, if we got the right type of setup," but he said, "Where are you getting all the money?" You know, we don't even think about stuff like that. And I said, "Well, I don't know, I'm told one day we're broke and then the next day I'm told we got, we're rolling in dough." So I don't know what to believe anymore. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Waddell?
I heard anybody say we're broke, so I got to say that, but I think the AMI meters are a good thing. Yeah, we need infrastructure repair. The problem is, the money's not out there for infrastructure. We'd love to do some work. I'm sure that some of the, there's, there's water leaks all over the city, we all know that. And the state legislature is working on other ways to fund this, we've been keeping track of that. We're looking at ways for the state to help with infrastructure repair and new construction. And with Ms. Musson, she's been looking at the grants that are available out there. I've been watching the grant process, the state grants, there just hasn't been any for what we want to do right now, but there is some work within the legislature and Mr. Blair, Representative Blair, has been talking about that with us about funneling some money to small communities to do infrastructure repair. And we've been talking about this for 20 or 30 years, infrastructure repair, and back when money was available, we didn't have the matching funds. Well, we have the matching funds now, we just don't, there's nothing there available to us. And I think the legislatures understand that. And we're going to be working toward that, I hope, and I hope that our elected officials in the state and the federal level understand that there are issues in small communities all across the state of Ohio that need to do that. And that's partly one of the things that the Ohio Municipal League is looking into, is working with smaller communities other than the big three Cs and trying to get funds for us. So I think that hopefully in the next year, two or three, these people are going to realize that there's, we need funds for repairs and we'll get that.
Ms. Braemeyer? Nothing? Mr. Alberini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great meeting tonight, thank you for inviting me in, I appreciate it. One thing I will say is that I rely on the information at hand that's given to me. I respect Bill George's opinion a whole lot. You know, you don't go to a, have a brain surgeon by a doctor who does colonoscopies. And that being said, he's the expert and I rely on the information he has given us. Bill George says that we need this for the future of Newton Falls, then we need it. And I'm not going to question his opinion, I value it. Other than that, everybody have a great summer and be blessed.
All right, Mr. Lynch?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, thanks for participating, those of you that are left in this unusual experiment in outdoor communication. I want to extend my thanks to Mr. Woodard, the Superintendent of Schools. This is their facility and they open-armed, allowed us to take over the field. Over on the very far corner, sitting next to our security agent Joe, is Russ Corley, who's the Director of Physical Operations for the school system. And he and his crew worked very hard to accommodate us. And the last thing I wanted to say was thank you to all the members of council, and in particular to Tom Gregory and his crew. As I mentioned, 45 minutes before the meeting started, the electricity going off and then coming back on again caused a wiping out of all the preset audio systems. And it wasn't until about five minutes before the meeting started that things began to light up again in the way that they needed to. And quite a challenge was overcome to pull this off, and thanks everybody for participating.
All right. The only thing I have is I want to just again reiterate what the city manager said and throw out some thank yous first and foremost to the, to the school, to Mr. Russ Corley and to the superintendent and their school board and everything, and wanted to thank them and I wanted to thank the city council for your participation and for not egging my house or anything like that when you found out we were going to come out here. I think it went well, it was really nice, it's really a kind of a breath of fresh air, you could really, no pun intended, but to come out here and just experience a little bit of normalcy is crazy and hectic as it is and the individuals that came out and I'm always thankful for Newton Falls and the zeal that you approach things, it's sometimes some people come across as being angry, but it's not angry, you love your community and I, I'm thankful for the passion and the zeal, just thankful for the people that came out, thankful for the people that are watching. And once again, I'll just ask the people that are watching on TV and people on Facebook tonight, let's use the situations that we're going through right now as a time to bring each other together, not tear each other apart, be gentle with your comments and not battle too much. And again, I thank you and thank the council for, you know, the input that each individual had in all the businesses that was done tonight and, you know, nobody's bleeding or bruised or anything like that, and that's something to thank God about. And that's all I have. Do we have a motion?
To Russ and our, the Street Department, with an applause. Thank you.
All right. Good idea. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Bariak, Mr. Savet, roll call.
Braemeyer?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned, all right.